Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, April 9th. We'll move right into the consent agenda, this is approval of payroll, March 22nd and April 5th of 2019, approval of minutes, March 19th, March 22nd, and April 4th, 2019, approval of claims, March 21st, March 28th, and April 4th, 2019, and then, of course, we have the Waits and Measures Monthly Report that's filed for February 16 through March 15th. I'll open it up to the floor, oh wait, no, we gotta go through Memorial Opera House. We have four artistic service agreements, Valerie Bala, Eric Lester, Alexis Blachus, and Don Parker, and then we have a venue rental agreement, this is a non-for-profit for South Shore Orchestra. I'll open it up to the floor.
Motion two for your consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion in second for consent agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Under new business, I'd just like to make an announcement today, we've released and approved the 2018 Development Stormwater Management yearly annual report, this is our first report for this department, it's a department that's just three years old, this is our first year that we've done an annual report, you'll be seeing these every year, it will be posted online, we'll be handing them out, anywhere you can get your hands on it, you should really read it, it's a great report, it tells you what the county is doing, the money we're spending, where we're spending it, what we're doing, why we're doing it, it's all in here, and it also talks about how our department's formed, how we operate, so everybody should have a really good understanding when you have this report, this is a good, this is a good report that we'll be putting out every year, and it lets our citizens and the taxpayers and fee payers know where this money's going and how it's being used in a transparent way, so this is part of our educational piece as well, even though it doesn't apply for that, it still is an educational piece and I would, we're very proud of it, a lot of hard work was put into this, it's a very easy document to read, and I think if you're a citizen of Porter County, it would, I would just encourage you to read this and really find out what we're trying to do up here, because that's the hardest part up here, is getting what we do out to everybody, so everybody knows what's going on, but that's, that's gonna be ongoing. So, thank you for the report, it was accepted this morning in the stormwater management report, so this is an official document of county government. Thank you. Now, we're gonna move right into our agenda, we're gonna move to GIS, this is renewal of workers' comp and property and casualty insurance, why don't we have those gentlemen from GIS come up? Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
How you doing? Okay.
Charlie Keen with General Insurance Services.
And Mark Barrett with General Insurance Services. First off, we want to say that we appreciate serving the county as your property and casualty broker and risk management consultant, and we look forward to continuing to working closely with you to implement your risk manage, risk management strategy. Just a little background, back in April last year, we recommended to place property and casualty in coverage with Travelers Insurance, and at the same time, the county's workers' comp was placed with a partially self-funded program, and that process, we went out to 12 carriers, five carriers provided quotes, and after an analysis of those, we recommended that, along with KBIC, that we place the county's coverage with Travelers, as well as establishing the self-funded workers' comp program.
So, a little bit about the renewal, so the renewal is officially on April 10th, there's three parts to the renewal program, the first is the Travelers renewal section, which includes the property, the liability, the automobile, and the excess liability, the second is the cyber liability, which is provided by Lloyds of London, CFC underwriting is the underwriting group that handles that, and Caitlin Morgan Insurance Services, as Mark stated, handles the self-funded, partially self-funded workers' compensation program that we established approximately a little over a year ago. So, with that being said, your packets include a renewal premium summary, so we just are putting a comparison together, expiring versus the renewal, the renewal premium for, for all lines of coverage, with the exception of the self-funded workers' comp, which we're not renewing anything at this point in time, $948,358. So, the premium itself is, is up about three, 4.3 percent, 2.3 percent of the premium increases from exposure, so your general liability is based on expenditures, not including capital improvements, so expenditures are up, and therefore, the premium is up. The base rates have stayed exactly the same, no change in the actual base rates. The remaining 2.6 of the premium increases from the automobile coverage, the automobile coverage, we've changed the deductible at renewal from a $500 liability deductible to a zero liability deductible, and we can get into the nuances of that at a later meeting. And also, the auto rates have gone up 1 percent, which is significantly below the industry average of 2.5 to 3.5 percent right now, auto is the industry loss leader, it's, it's rough, so I feel that the Travelers renewal is very favorable from that perspective. And then, as far as the self-funded workers' compensation, we are just recommending that the county contributes $417,865 into the loss fund, there are no insurance policies or contracts to renew with that regards, just the funding of your loss fund.
Then we also, in addition to recommending renewing with Travelers, we also recommend a new coverage that's available, Travelers is offering workplace violence coverage, some of the things included are counseling services, independent security guard services, security consultants, public relations consultants, and forensic analysis, the limit you get out of this is $250,000, and the premium is $1,800 roughly, we recommend that coverage be something to look at. So, in conclusion, we're excited to continue on as your risk management consultant and recommend the continuing of the coverages, as well as the workplace violence.
That was very brief, are there any questions?
So, it looks like the bulk of the increase is for autos and liability coverage.
That's correct.
And the liability coverage went up, why again, is it, was it our sales related, or was it?
Essentially, I mean, in the government world, we talk about expenditures.
Yeah, right.
So, yeah.
Sorry, wrong.
But you're equating it exactly, correct.
Exactly right.
You're, you're equating it the same way.
Right. We're also adding an entirely new building.
That's not this.
57 Franklin.
That's correct, that's part of it.
Yeah. In the base liability, yes, right?
We made lots of improvements over the course of the year that we've come and talked to you about.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but.
That's not part of the increase.
It is not, no, no, it's, it's exposure on the general liability and the automobile.
Is the, with the renovation specifically to the North County Court Annex, because we're going through more square footage, would that affect it as well?
It will once completed.
Yeah, that's part of, I think, right now, Jim, that.
But that's not part of this.
No, that's builder's risk, so that's under the building portion of the building, and in builder's risk, there's liability there as well.
Okay.
So, that's, but yes, those premiums will increase, though, when we, so, and we, we're preparing for that, to get some. Any other questions for the board?
I think you, I think you, your firm is doing an excellent job.
Thanks.
Yeah, I, a lot of the public, again, doesn't see all the work that goes into this, and all the things that we've changed and moved around, and we've changed balances and coverages and other things, which, all through the recommendations, so you guys have just done a great job, and, and, you know, also in this plan, we also have included in this plan for our safety meetings, to try and get our work comp numbers down, and we actually have someone outside of government that comes in and conducts these meetings, to make sure they're relevant, to make sure that people are listening and we're training, so we have a lot more teeth into what we're doing now, from an insurance standpoint, and we're actually proactively trying to manage our premiums now, and I can tell you, that is a far cry from when I came up here three, four years ago, it's a far cry, we've made, we've turned a very large corner, and a lot of it is thanks to you guys and your work that you've done this office, to council, everybody, so we're on a good trajectory, don't like to see these numbers inch up a little bit, but I do understand why, and has to do off of claims and some other things, too, so.
Greatly appreciate the transparency and the information that you're sending us and the costs involved, so.
You're welcome, it's, it's been, it's been fun working with the, the county through the process, and it's very appreciative that we have the commissioners behind us on this, because safety doesn't, safety doesn't happen unless it's from the top down, so we greatly appreciate your support in the safety initiatives that we've established.
We understand that if, you know, if we don't take that route, this board is the first one that gets hit with the results of not paying attention to it.
True.
Your support shows just in our dealings with the department heads, they're all very, very cooperative, very, very much wanna do a good.
We want our employees to do the same.
Absolutely.
It's a win-win, I mean, they're safe and you drive your costs down, wow, we like that, we like that, so, so I guess we need to take action on this, attorney?
Yes, and we need to make a decision on the workplace violence, whether we're adding that or not.
And that was for $1,800?
$1,805 is the estimated annual premium.
Yeah, I hate to do it, but in today's world, we should be kicking ourselves if we didn't.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the renewal with the included workplace violence coverage.
Second. We have a motion in second for the GIS renewal of workers' comp, property and casualty insurance, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up, Hoosier Start, Todd Williams.
Scott, you wanna sort of take us through this?
No, I think you need Scott. Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you very much, my name is Todd Williams, I'm your retirement plan advisor for your State of Indiana 457B deferred compensation plan, also known as Hoosier Start, very excited to be working with the county in getting the good employees and elected officials and things ready for retirement, so, the reason I'm here this morning is to ask for your permission to do an amendment to allow an added benefit, the Roth benefit, to the existing policy. This is not a material change in any way to your Hoosier Start program, and it does not come with any additional cost to the county. One of the benefits I have in having been here for the past six years, the first five years I was with the State of Indiana's plan, I worked exclusively with local government and added the Hoosier Start benefit for counties, cities, towns, schools, and libraries throughout the state, in the 60-plus that I've added during that first five years, all but one, I believe, one small library, does include the Roth benefit, and this is something that the state employees have had the benefit of doing since 2011. Do you have a copy of the amendment within your packet?
We do.
If not, I have one.
We have it.
You all have one, okay, good. Let me just read the, the first paragraph of that, I think it kind of summarizes what this does, "Beginning July 1st, 2011, the State of Indiana Public Employee Deferred Compensation Plan, the 457B Plan, has been amended to permit eligible employees to designate that their elective deferrals are to be made as Roth contributions. Roth 457B contributions are deducted from an eligible employee's paycheck on an after-tax basis. An employee who wishes to allow Roth contributions must have a payroll system that accommodates this contribution type." So, in speaking with Rhonda Young and also Christie Zern, I use, I believe, LO, LO, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right.
Lau.
Lau, Lau, that's a very common provider for the counties, and one that I know many also are already utilizing the Roth benefit. So, one thing, I have to eat a little humble pie here, because when I met with Rhonda and Christie, and I was under the impression mistakenly that they could go ahead and approve that internally without commissioner approval, so I apologize for that, however, there's some silver lining to that, because shortly after that, I met with the sheriff's department, and we got a chance to kind of test the waters and see how well this would be received. So, I did a presentation, there was about 22 people in the room, a lot of them young, deputies and things, of those 22, 10 immediately enrolled in the plan, having not been enrolled prior to that, and eight out of the 10 chose to defer Roth, so we got to kind of see, you know, how that went over with that group. An 11th person who had been contributing to Hoosier Start and stopped, chose to restart contributions as Roth, and I've received several emails following that meeting, until the word got out that, no, we need to get, you know, formal approval on this, of people that have expressed interest in being able to save Roth. Would you like me to give you kind of a rundown of what the benefit of being able to save Roth deductions is for an employee versus the current pre-tax deductions, which they can already do?
Yeah, if you could do it in a Reader's Digest version.
Absolutely. Let's just take an example of someone that makes $50,000 a year and saves $5,000 pre-tax currently to their 457 plan, the immediate benefit to that person would, of course, be the tax break in 2019, they would only owe taxes on $45,000 in income, the downside being that that $5,000 contribution would grow throughout the years, come out as a distribution in retirement, and all of it would be taxable, both the contributions and the gains. Roth would eliminate taxes on the gains, okay, so there is no tax break in 2019, in this example, if I make $50,000 and contribute $5,000 Roth, I still owe taxes in 2019 on $50,000 in income, but my gains, well, my principal and my gains come out dollar for dollar, and the gains are tax-free, as long as they've remained in the account for at least five years, and I wait until I'm 59 and a half or older before I withdraw those contributions. Worst-case scenario, if someone doesn't meet one of those two criteria, the IRS will then tax the gains that they've earned, which in case, you know, if taxes have gone up, they still win, because they paid lower taxes in 2019 on the contribution, and higher taxes on just the gains. So, in a nutshell, that's really what the Roth benefit does.
Okay.
Any questions from the board?
I think this is a great addition, especially for younger people who have last few years to each have this benefit in place.
It's another tool in the toolbox.
It is, it, I think it's one that will, as you said, Commissioner Blaney, it really will boost participation among your younger workers, and among anyone that might find themselves in a higher tax bracket in retirement than they are now.
Is there any income issue with this kind of IRA, don't you have to make under a certain number for?
That's a great question, I'm glad you brought that up. So, one of the benefits of a 457B Roth deferral is there's no income limitations at all.
That's that we pay anybody enough to worry about that.
Well, sometimes, if you have someone that has an outside business or something, currently IRAs, the limitations are $137,000 for a single person, $203,000 for a married couple, so if you have anyone that goes over that, they could still contribute up to $19,000 here as pre-tax or.
Yeah, they, in a police officer's case, they're second jobs, which most of them have to have, they, that, that income is also counted toward their total income at the end of the year.
Yes.
This is real plus, motion to approve adding the Roth benefit to the Hoosier Start retirement program.
Second. We have a motion in a second to include an amendment to the State Indiana Public Employee Deferred Compensation Plan adoption agreement, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, oh, these aren't too bad, we only got three. We have some pay applications, first one, EMCOR Higher Electric Change Order Number Two, in the amount of $5,184, this is out at the court, this is the courthouse, downtown courthouse renovation.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for Change Order Number Two, in the amount of $5,184 to EMCOR Higher Electric, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have North County Annex, Portage up here, we got Zilikowski Construction, this is Pay App Number Three, in the amount of $64,414.75, this is bid category number two, this is masonry, open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in second for Pay App Three, for Zilikowski Construction, for $64,414.75 for category number two, masonry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Pay App Number Four for Zilikowski, in the amount of $152,203.30 for bid category number one, open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for Pay App Number Four, in the amount of $152,203.30, bid category number one for Zilikowski Construction, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. So, we're done with those. Now, we're gonna move over to Sheriff, the Sheriff's Department, and we'll have the folks come up here and.
Going downstairs is even worse.
You take it off.
I know.
Good morning, Edie.
Good morning.
Carrie.
Morning.
So, we have a Sheriff's 2018 compensation agreement.
And I do some house cleaning and getting it back.
So, basically, we enter into an agreement with the sheriff, and on a yearly basis pursuant to 3621325, it basically, we pay the sheriff a salary that's the same as the prosecutor, and because of that, all of the tax warrant collection fees, and also any, the sheriff was then, it's either or, and so, instead of, to either take money from the, a portion of the tax warrant collections, and also the, the food, the food allowances for the inmates and other things, instead of that type of compensation, we go with the compensation that the statute allows for, that just pays him the same as the prosecutor does, so this would be a housekeeping for 18, and then also, the next one is to do the same for 19.
And if we, we would decide that his compensation is, is reflective of the prosecutor's, those funds are still coming out of those same pools?
No, those funds are going into, into the, they're staying where the funds that they were coming from to begin with, and he's getting paid out of the general fund budget of the sheriff.
We changed this a number of years ago already.
Yes. Was it, we just renewing this, or?
Just formalizing it.
Do it every year.
We do it every year.
Yep. Did you do it last year, because is it last year on here?
That's why we're housekeeping 18, and we're doing 19.
Are we doing both together?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Sheriff's 2018 and 2019 compensation agreement.
Second. We have a motion in second for the Sheriff's 18 and 2019 compensation agreements, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Wild man, uniform and linen. And we have a service agreement for cleaning the garage uniforms in the amount of $2683 per week. This is the sheriff's garage, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's half of what we've been paying you.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for wild man, uniform and linen, this is a service agreement for cleaning the garage uniforms in the amount of $2683 per week, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have an MOU, memorandum of understanding for the Indiana Drug Enforcement Association Highway Interdiction Team Program.
We shortened it a little bit.
Yeah.
Using those acronyms, you know.
And you wanna give a little description on this, or do we need it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, basically, this is, the Indiana, I can let him talk.
They do.
The Highway Drug Enforcement Association came to us, they've been coming to us for a couple of years, asking us to start this program, but we, we weren't able to do it, so he, sheriff reached out to them and said, okay, you know, we're ready, and they showed up with whatever we wanted, and basically, I think I gave a breakdown of, they're giving, we're getting two trucks and equipment, and a Celebrite machine, which is testing for heroin and, what is the Celebrite, what is it, heroin and?
Basically, any drug.
Yeah, any drug, so they're giving us that, they had to start this program, and so we're, that's what we're doing, and we're gonna work with, we have to guarantee a full-time employee on this, and so does Valpo and Portage, and so it was just, it's just under $110,000, they gave us up to $110,000, but I think we got it down unless something happens when we go to pay for it, and, you know, there's something else there, but, so that's what we're doing.
What amount, what amount of county funds are having to go toward that effort?
No.
None?
None.
Zero?
There are, we'll, they'll be doing seizures, and some of it will be through state, that's why this is a state grant, and then if we do anything through the feds, it'll go through our normal fed grant.
They're providing, you said two trucks, are those pickup trucks?
Pickup trucks, yeah, you know the vehicle.
Actually, a, a truck and a Dodge, or any of those, the two choices were.
So, if a pickup truck comes behind you with lights, then you probably pull over.
Probably a good idea, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for memorandum of understanding for the Indiana Drug Enforcement Association Highway Interdiction Team Program, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a memorandum of understanding for Porter County Sheriff's Office, Portage Police Department, Valpo Police Department, which have agreed to combine efforts in regards to interdiction efforts in Porter County, Indiana, I like to see that, working together.
And that's the same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing, yeah.
And what will happen is, depending on what agency is involved, and as long as they've got somebody in full-time, any seizures will be split by a third, so.
That's laid out in the memorandum, and then also the ultimate ownership of the vehicles and equipment that's coming from the.
Yeah, this is a, this is a, we're running this team, this is a sheriff's run team, so the trucks are ours, the Celebrite machine is ours, the seizures will be split, and then the count, they'll, they'll, each time will get.
Is it only state roads that you will be running on?
It'll be mainly on like 94, the toll road, that's where the.
That's where it happens.
Where it's all going, Chicago to Detroit or, or west, but mainly 94 and toll roads.
And human trafficking.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second for memorandum of understanding for the, for the Porter County Sheriff's Office, Portage Police Department, Valpo Police Department, which have agreed to combine efforts in regards to interdiction efforts in Porter County, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have an ordinance, of course, we need an ordinance now, because we have to establish a fund, right?
Yep.
For the deposit of the money that we're taking in for this program from the state, so this, we're gonna create a, an account, or a deposit, a fund right now, so with that, we have to open up a public hearing, we're gonna suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing, we're gonna ask three, three opportunities for each side, and with that, we're gonna ask anybody wishing to, to speak against this ordinance, you can come forward now, second opportunity for anybody to come forward to speak against this fund, third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this fund. First call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this fund, second call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this fund, third and final call, anybody wishing to speak in favor of this fund, and with that, the public hearing is closed, and we're gonna open it back up to the commissioners' meeting, and I'll open it up to the floor. Edie, were, were, were we doing anything, or major gear, anything like this, say, last year, or the year before last?
Well, we do have a HIDA team, which is the high, high-intensity drug trafficking area, so it's, it's similar to that, but this being funded by, you know, the association, so it's similar.
But more, more ambitious.
But it's, but this time, that was part, that was part-time, but now this can be a full-time team, so you'll have three guys out there, 40 hours a week, getting after it, you know, trying to get the drug seizures and cash seizures.
You probably don't wanna run through Porter County if you're. You probably don't wanna run through Porter County if you're hauling drugs.
Probably not.
Motion to approve the ordinance on first reading.
Second. We have a motion, a second, on first reading, for an ordinance establishing a fund for deposit proceeds for the Indiana Drug Enforcement Association Highway Interdiction Team Program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy the weather.
Yeah, we're going back.
Animal shelter, Tony Bianchi.
Yes. And we got it. She gave him one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, what do you got here for us, Tony?
Well, basically...
Oh, well, you're not...
Sorry.
That's all right.
I was pleased you were talking. What we're looking at is a basic maintenance agreement with Washburn to come out and do internal lubrication of our machines to make sure they continue to operate in a satisfactory manner.
Makes sense to me.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for a maintenance agreement on our washer, out at the laundry equipment, out at the animal shelter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Get them fixed.
Any news, the sheriff?
We're still low on animals. We're still doing really well. As far as... We haven't gotten to kitten season coming in yet, but we expect it to happen soon.
Another month?
But our numbers are down right now, and everything is good. Oh, yes, our Be Kinder Animals. Not what I'd do without him. Our Be Kinder Animals event is coming up on April 27th. It's from 10:00 to 4:00. It's a Saturday, and it'll be at the new Expo East building.
Oh, nice. What is that involved?
That is... It's more or less a fair for rescue groups and vendors, vet's offices, pet supply places, to come, and we all get together, and we usually get about 1,000 or so visitors during the day. We do raffle baskets and that kind of thing to make money for the shelter. And it helps with the rescues, get homes for their animals also.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don, I see. It looks like a copier kind of day.
Yeah, we have three of them.
I see that. I see they're all old, too.
Yeah, health department suffered for a long time here.
Well, we'll take care of Letty.
Okay. I have one for the Valpo office, which is eight years old, and I have one for the Portage office, which is seven years old.
Can we buy those together?
You can do the two.
So, we could do the two purchases.
And the two meetings.
Yes.
So, this is all the same contract that you've been working under with Rumco?
Correct.
Motion to approve copier purchases for the health departments in Valpo and Portage, and a copier maintenance agreement for the new copiers.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for copier machine purchases for the Valpo Health Department, Portage Health Department, Judge Drenns' office.
No, no. She did the first four.
Oh, the first four. I'm sorry. Let me redo that.
I just did health department.
That's okay, yeah. I'm sorry. So, this is for the purchase agreement for the Valpo Health Department, the Portage Health Department, and a copier maintenance agreement for both machines. Did I call them? Yeah, we have a motion, a second.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Sorry about that. I got off... I got... Next up, Adams Rumco, again, a copier for... A great copier for Judge Drenns' Portage office. This is an eight-year-old copier. And a coordinating maintenance agreement for that machine as well.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for a copier purchase agreement and maintenance agreement for Judge Drenns' office at the Portage North County Annex. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Yeah, and that's it. Thanks, Don. Thought you had something on the second page here. We got Ray Floyd, Buildings Facilities Director. Ray, you wanna make an introduction to the county about your new...
Yeah, I have a new administration assistant, Tracy Wood. Do you wanna stand up and wave to everybody?
Hi, Tracy. Welcome.
She's a good end part of our team.
Good. Thanks, Ray. What do you got?
We got the FE Moran Fire Protection for the Chesterton Highway, for $560 for the year, and also for the animal shelter, $560 for the year.
Okay. We can do those together, too, right?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for inspection and testing systems for the Chesterton Highway Garage and the Porter County Animal Shelter for FE Moran Fire Protection Company. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next.
All right, we got the quotes for the shelving dry racks for the jail kitchen. They're pretty needed. They're pretty beat up. Federal Supply was the cheapest one.
Motion to approve federal supply shelving and drying racks for the jail kitchen at $9,952.52.
A second. Okay. Hey, is... Does this come out of the... Which fund? Does that come out of the...
It can come out of either facilities money, or it could come out of the jail fund. Either or.
I think we should take it out of the jail fund. So... Okay, so, we have a low responsible bidder, Federal Supply USA, $9,952.52. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. And then, the last but not least, Lori Daly, again, at the Expo Center. What would a commissioners' meeting be without Lori Daly at the Expo Center?
Cake, cake, cake.
Yes.
So, we're requesting a new lawnmower for the grounds. Purchase a new mower that's efficient for fuel, for the fuel injections, sort of carburetor. Think it'll get 30% savings on fuel, so that's where we're at on that.
And we're replacing this because the other one was stolen.
Stolen, yeah, last year. During construction.
And we have cameras now, right? Motion to approve the new mower from Heinold &amp; Feller at $10,899.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for a new mower at the Expo Center, for Heinold &amp; Feller, $10,899. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Now, you can go get that mower, Ray. Thank you. Thanks, Ray. The floors look great out there. Yeah, I just gotta say that the building's really... I could really see the improvement. Next up, development and stormwater management. Bob Thompson.
Buckle up for this. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
So, the first one up, we got a rezone, right? And this is the second reading. Second reading. And this was for 327 North, 400 East. Yes. Petitioner was James Zimmer, requesting a rezone from I-2 down to RR.
Open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for a rezone, second reading, 327 North, 400 East. Petitioner, James Zimmer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next up.
This is a rezone on the south side of Burlington Beach. Petitioner was Dr. Jones, and it was changing the zoning from R1 to OT, Office and Technology, again, second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for a rezone on south side of Burlington Beach Road, between Cayman Avenue and Explorer Drive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. I think that doctor's tried a couple times to finding a location here in Porter County, so I...
This is her third time.
Yeah, this is her third time. So, she's... Todd's waving at us back there, but I just wanna... Yeah, but I think... I mean, the other locations were... They were good ones, but tough ones. But this is good. I think this is a great spot for her, so... Always welcome new business. Yep. So...
Thank you very much.
Yep. Falling Waters Easement Vacation, second reading.
Motion to approve. Are we changing something?
Nope. I was just gonna...
Go ahead.
This is second reading again, and it was for the vacation of an easement between lots 239 and 240.
The second reading? Open the floor. Oh, you upset her. She's not gonna say it now.
I thought it was more than that.
You're welcome. You gotta step up there.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for Falling Waters Easement Vacation, this is second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. Next up, Olthoff Homes. Go ahead, Bob.
This is Plan Commission Resolution 19-03. Petitioners, Olthoff Homes, care of Todd A. Leaf. They're requesting a territorial authority agreement. The parcel they're looking at has been annexed by the city of Alpharazo, but since there's a US Census moratorium on annexations for this year, everything, this ordinance will not take place until January 1st of 2020. So, they came in front of the Plan Commission to request the territorial authority of this particular parcel for the subdivision for Olthoff Homes to be given to the city of Alpharazo to go forward with that. The Plan Commission heard this at their public meeting, forwarded to the commissioners with an 8-0 recommendation, favorable recommendation, with the two items that they requested on that is that limited construction traffic on Sunny Lane. This is the development to the north, and also to work with us as far as drainage goes, since this drains into the Flint Lake Garden Terrace drain, right?
Are we to assume that the city of Alpharazo is all right with this as well?
We are, because the council has taken action to annex it...
Correct.
As soon as it's allowed.
There's an ordinance in place for this annexation, but it does not take effect until January 1st, 2020.
Pretty extensive work between the two bodies.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion, a second.
No, no, wait. We need this public hearing.
Oh, I agree.
I'm sorry.
We're just having a conversation up here about how do we enforce this Sunny Lane situation? Because we've gotten into these infill subdivision issues before, and people get... You know, they don't like these trucks coming down there. So, I just wanna make sure that in here, that we have a good mechanism to police this. That's because we... A couple of years ago, we had a situation in Aberdeen, which sort of blossomed out of control a little bit. And it's really hard to direct traffic and be out there all the time. So, I just wanna make sure that the folks at Sunny Lane, that we have this in there, and that it's a mechanism that can be enforced. That's my main concern. Sorry. Yeah, so, what we're gonna do here now is, this is a public hearing again, so we're gonna suspend the commissioners' meeting, open up a public hearing, and we're gonna give people the opportunity to come forward and speak against, or in favor, of what this amendment, zoning amendment. So, with that, what we... And then, what we do is, if you wanna come up and speak, we ask that you come over right up in the city here. We have a microphone. Give your name and your address, where you're from, and then you can speak into us what your concerns or things are. So, with that, we're gonna have the first call. Anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this zoning amendment? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this zoning amendment? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this zoning amendment? First call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this amendment? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this amendment? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this amendment? And with that, the public hearing is now closed. We will now open up the commissioners and to take action, or throw it to the board.
Motion to approve. How should I word that?
The approval's contingent upon Alpharazo City, following the recommendation on... For the traffic out of, what is it, Sunnyside?
Sunny Lane.
Sunny Lane.
And also to work with the county on drainage.
Correct.
So, moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second, on first reading, for the zoning amendment for territorial authority for Olthoff Homes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
I just wanna say on this, this is... This was smart work by the planning department to take this route on this subdivision. Makes a whole lot more sense to be utilizing the ordinances that this will eventually be in, and since we've gone through that, and we've had Alpharazo obviously indicate that they're willing to annex it, I think it takes a little bit of additional pressure off our planning department and our planning board, and trying to thread the needle of, it's our ordinances, because you're only here because we're in a census year, but yet, we know you're going into Valpo, and the... Our ordinances aren't exactly the same, and obviously, as you can see from the provided... We're pretty much... This is pretty much surrounded at this point by Alpharazo Development, so...
Yes.
I think this makes good sense, and I think it was a good way of handling it at this point.
Yep. Agreed. Thank you again. Thanks, Don. Next up, we got some good news here. More good news. I should say, more good news. Go ahead, Bob.
What's before you now is the INDOT, and what they refer to as the LPA Agreement. This is for receiving the Community Crossings Matching Grants that we received for 2019, their first issue of the CCMG Award. We were awarded $656,046 for projects that Matt Gadelak, our highway engineer, and Rich Sexton, our highway superintendent, had worked on. So, what's before you now is the actual agreement with INDOT to go forward with receiving these matching grant funds.
I'd like to note, too, that there's a total grant award of $1 million allowed for counties for the full year, so this is just for the spring?
Right.
And the fall, we're gonna apply for...
Oh, terrific.
Yeah.
Yeah, the second one is in August.
Motion to approve the INDOT Porter County Agreement for the grants.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for the 2019 INDOT Local Roads and Bridges Matching Grants Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
I have to make a note on this agreement, and we have sticky notes that probably sit all over in this. It has to be signed in blue ink. Everybody has to sign it the same day, including the attest, and it all has to be dated the same day, all in blue ink, or else INDOT will reject. Yes.
Buy some blue pens. Well, they're looking for any way to say no, aren't they? I don't think I own a blue pen. We'll get one. Well, mine are black.
They just happened to bring a few.
Yeah, pretty handy. Okay, go ahead, Bob.
All right. Next, as part of the Community Crossings Grant, they changed the whole procedures in this way. It's no longer where you can do it off of the annual bid process. We have to actually bid each project separately. So, what you have right in front of you are three projects that are within the 2019 CCMG. This will be bid openings for North Caymans, Alpharazo City Limits to US Highway 6, Meridian Road, Alpharazo City Limits to US Highway 6, and Sturdy Road from the railroad crossing to US Highway 30.
Time to open up the bids.
I'm signing.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Had to get those out. Believe we have three in each category. Ooh.
Which was the one that we... 126 is... Yeah, okay.
Okay, the first...
Okay, the first, uh, the first bid, um, is from Walsh and Kelly out of Griffith.
Which one's this?
Uh, this would be, uh, North Cayman Met Avenue from Wesley Road to Highway Six, and the dollar amount is four hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. Four, five, five, three, six, three, eight, five. Same one, uh, this is Reef Riley. They're four hundred and fourteen thousand, six, forty-seven, fifty. So, four, one, four, six, four, seven, five, zero. And here's the last one for this section. This is Town and Country. And they're five, twenty-six, six, fifty-two, ten. Five, twenty-six, six, fifty-two, ten.
This next group is Meridian Road.
Okay. Meridian Road. This is again Walsh and Kelly. Three, three, oh, five, three, one, ninety. Three, three, oh, five, three, one, ninety. Site number two for this section is Reef Riley. Three, three, oh, seven, nine, oh, ten. Three hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and ten cents. And then the last one is for Town and Country. And they're three hundred and eighty-two, six, twelve, ninety. Three, eight, two, six, one, two, ninety.
And this last group is Sturdy Road.
Sturdy Road. Walsh and Kelly. Sixty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents.
Can you repeat that again? Sixty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents.
Thank you.
Um, this is for Reef Riley. Uh, same section, sixty-six thousand, two, forty-one, ten. Wow. Get the shaving kit out. It's a close one. And then, uh, Town and Country. Uh, seventy-seven thousand, one eighty-eight, seventy. Seventy-seven thousand, one eighty-eight, seventy. And that's our the bids.
Okay.
You guys will take them over, look them over?
Yeah, Matt will take them here and then, uh, work, um, with engineering and then, um, Rich, and make sure they're responsible bids.
Those all came in under the estimates. And, uh, one thing I wanna note about these as well is this is the, the first time the county has elevated our standards for the paving projects. Uh, so we actually have a quality control measure in this for accounting for density. Um, if they don't achieve the right kind of density, there's a penalty to the contract, so, um, they're incentivized to perform, uh, to actually produce good work in the field.
Thank you.
Protecting our investment.
Much needed.
Is that, I mean, all three of those roads, the traffic count has really increased over the last five, six, seven years.
Absolutely. They're some of the busiest roads we have.
Yeah, those, uh, with the paving and the striping, those, those roads are gonna look wonderful when they're finished.
Yes, they will.
Plus, we're putting a better product on there too.
Yep.
So, that's even better.
Yep.
So, thank you, that's, we're getting there. We're getting there. Um, so, I think we'll probably, if that be part of that special meeting maybe when we, uh, announce these and award them? So, we'll probably be working on a special meeting like we talked in Stormwater this morning to where we can, uh, have a meeting to get these things, uh, get them out and get them going, so we can get them on the list and get, get going.
Well, it's part of your submission too, correct? You gotta have the signed contract done before you can submit. What is that, by July first?
Right.
Right. They have to be under contract by a certain time.
Yeah. Okay, just.
The sooner the better.
You guys keep those deadlines, keep, keep on us, right? Get that information to us so we don't miss any deadlines. Okay, um, next up, Bridge One Twenty-Six, Bob?
Bridge One Twenty-Six, this is seven hundred north over Salt Creek. We just received the one bid, Garyup Construction on that. Um, we went through this, um, rather thoroughly as far as that goes. Uh, the big news is, is that NIPSCO has agreed that they will cut the line on this particular project, so NIPSCO is no longer an issue. Uh, one of the things that is with this agreement though is if a major storm does come through and starts knocking out powers in certain areas, they're gonna have to come back in and hook this back up, which is understandable. It's a large, major feed that goes into this area on that. So, the utilities is no longer an issue as far as that, yes. Um, we researched as far as Garyup Construction doing bridge work, uh, talked with Lake County. We also found out that in, I think, around twenty fourteen, they actually did a bridge for us on Evergreen Road up in Portage. I can't think of the bridge number as far as that goes, but it was a steel beam bridge, similar to this other than I, it, uh, we're using galvanized here. So, they do have the experience as far as that goes. We went back to our engineer, USI, the consultant, and they admitted that they made a mistake in the engineering estimate. The engineering estimate should've been higher mainly because of the sheet piling that was required for the, uh, cofferdam and also for the scour protection along the abutment walls on that. So, they admitted it was probably going to be a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand additional, so.
That puts us under the ten percent then.
It does put us under the ten percent between the engineering estimate and what Garyup Construction has, um, bid at. Based off of all of this, staff is giving the recommendation to accept the Garyup bid for this particular project.
Any discussion?
Well, I just think that, I mean, I, I, I think on the USI engineering estimate, I think the other issue besides the sheet piling and the scouring issue was the unknown until after we had the bid open of what exactly NIPSCO was gonna do with the power lines. These weren't.
Right.
And I think part of the problem here is that we're describing it as a normal power line, and I'm not exactly sure that's the correct way of explaining it.
It's a main.
It's a main one. I mean, I think I, the normal power lines, correct me guys if I'm wrong, is maybe like ten or twelve KV. This is a line that's handling, um. Sixty-five kilovolts. It's large. It's a major feeder for this area.
Another reason why we're recommending it for approval is, uh, you know, the condition of the bridge, it has some scour issues right now, and we don't wanna have another Bridge One Thirty-Five scenario, so.
Yeah, we really can't afford to delay this any longer. And speaking of that, as soon as school's out is when you'll, assuming that we approve this, is when you'll start?
It'll be around that time.
Uh, we're gonna be issuing the notice to proceed today for the utilities to go forward. Um, NIPSCO's gonna be doing some work in there, and then we'll submit the, or send out the notice of award to Garyup and stuff and start with the contracts. Uh, once we get the contract approved and signed, then we'll get the notice to proceed. So, more than likely, it is gonna start after school is out. Um, there is a period too that, uh, we're trying to hit to make sure that they're in and out of the stream with the demolition because we're under, that's a salmonoid stream, so there's a window in June, I think it is, that we have to get in and out of that stream.
Wow.
Yeah, so that's, with this bridge, that's been the problem from day one. We have to work around a, a, a federal tributary for salmon. So, you only have so many months that you can work in this area. And then we found this power line that's under the buttress of the whole bridge, and it's a main line, so then we have to, so that's been the problem, just, you know, and, and, and working through some of these hidden surprises on bridges that were built forty, fifty, sixty, seventy years ago, um, you just, you don't know till you get into them. And the one thing that I really appreciate about what we're doing here is we are, as we start redoing a lot of these bridges, we're looking at our easements, we're looking at how much ground we have, if we need to go in and buy some additional ground to make the bridges mobile, to make them more maintainable, so you have slopes that you can walk on around the bridge and everything else. We're taking a much different approach to what we've been doing with the bridges in the past, just replacing them. We're, we're actually trying to look at how we can enhance these bridges, make them more purposeful, and also make them more maintainable, so we can maintain these. We just bought a piece of equipment last year that will now allow us to mow under bridges and guard rails and do some other things. So, um, you know, this, this has been the real headache, this project, but I think we're probably gonna be seeing more of these as we embark on this program, so, um, but I think we caught it and I think it's, it's, it needs to be done, as Jim said. It's a, it's, it's one of those bridges that needs to be done quickly, so. But I, I wanna thank you guys for working through it. I think we all learned a lot on this one.
Yes, we did.
A lot, so.
Uh, motion to approve the bid for the seven hundred north Bridge One Twenty-Six?
Second. We have a motion in second for the approval of Bridge One Twenty-Six for Garyup Construction. This is seven hundred north over Salt Creek. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign? Motion carries.
I'm sure if we have to get in there before school is out, you guys will communicate.
Absolutely.
It, it's gonna be the requirement of the contractor and everything like that, to do all of the proper notification, their emergency folks and tools and stuff, so.
We're also gonna use those message boards too, to notify.
Oh, yeah, we have a message board too, we just bought, so we can let people know. Good.
They're gonna be bouncing around to a number of bridges here soon.
Um, Bridge One Thirty-Five, this is Old Porter Road over Salt Creek.
This is for approval of the bid documents going on out and also the plan sheets, uh, with the signatures for the plan sheets on that. They don't have to be in blue ink, they can be in black if you have, that's, so.
The bridges are black.
It's approval of that. However, there is one thing, the bid has been, it has been out, right?
The bid's out.
All right, um, it is advertised for bids to be in by April thirtieth, and it is out already, so.
Which, it was approved, yeah.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll deal with it.
All right.
Yep. April thirtieth it is. We know these bridges have to get done, so whatever we have to do to push our schedules, to have a special meeting or whatever we gotta do, we're gonna do it.
Okay.
So, you guys tell us when you get stuff and then we'll go to work on our calendar and we'll get it, if we have to call a special meeting, we'll call a special meeting and...
Or if we need to leave one and do something, a special one for other, we can do that.
Okay.
Also, I, I wanna add real quick, Bob, is, um, on this one, you guys asked about the Frontier Line. We met with Frontier and, uh, they're supposed to be off the bridge by May fifteenth, uh, which will not delay our project. Um, I also wanna note that Structure Point, um, delivered on their expedited project timeframe, they were able to get the permits through, and so we're appreciative of that as a department.
That's great. Glad that's moving forward. The sooner on that rates, the better. Any other questions? Do we need to do anything here? We already got it out.
We did, we, we just need to approve the bid documents and the plan set approval.
Okay. Second, we have a motion in second for approval of bid documents, uh, for Bridge One Thirty-Five, Old Porter Road over Salt Creek. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign? Motion carries. Bridge One Thirty-Five MOU, what's this for now? This is for...
This is a sanitary sewer line that, it's a private line that services the, um, it's right next to the bridge on that, and it's, needs to be moved. And it services the, uh, Mobile Home Park.
Is it a Conservancy District line?
No.
No, it's under a private management corporation for the, uh.
Mobile Home.
Mobile Home Park, right? And it feeds into, I believe, into the City of Portage's sanitary system, but it is privately owned and privately held. They, the previous owner that just recently sold was a, uh, not-for-profit on that, so there lies the, uh, problem is, is that the relocation is.
Sewer line?
On us. So, we're agreeing to pay the relocation of the sewer to be able to get this bridge done.
And, how much? Estimate?
The whole, total estimate for this particular project, um, the bridge and the relocation of the, uh, sewer line is coming in around nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
For that.
But that's the entire project?
That's the whole bridge, right.
Right. So, what do you think in the, is that including the sewer relocation?
It includes the sewer relocation within this. Part of the fact is, is that with this being under, when they were a not-for-profit and everything like that, it's, um, yeah, they come back at us.
So, it looks like on these bridge projects, the bigger bridges that we're getting into, we, going into them with our engineering estimates, we need to be a little bit more.
Absolutely.
Uh, cognizant of potential utility issues.
Well, it certainly depends on utility ownership. That played a key role in the decision the department made. The other key decision point for us was, rather than wait, and we ran into this issue with Conservancy District in Port White Oak, out in Wheeler. In order for the conserv, for the utility owner to save up enough money to facilitate the utility relocation, we'd be looking out in the future to have that line relocated and then have the bridge relocation done. And as we've already seen, this bridge had no time to wait.
Yeah.
So, we made the decision to agree to pay for that relocation using safe statute as the guide here, and that's what brought us to this agreement. And I think it's the right move to get the bridge done at a reasonable price.
And One Thirty-Five's under an emergency repair.
Correct.
Correct, that's the one we have closed.
That's the one that's closed.
On Old Porter Road.
That bridge is closed. I, I'm just saying, we're learning as we're working through these, and we need to make sure when we look at our, our budgets and our estimated budgets for these things, that we have some money in there for potential, and it can be set out separate. If we don't use it, we don't use it, right? It's, it's a contingency amount, but it seems like we're really finding a lot of weird utility stuff around these bridges. And, uh, I think it's sort of telling us a story, so I think we need to pay attention and, uh, just consider that when we're in, in the phases of figuring it out, that's all I'm saying. I don't wanna give money to anybody, I just.
Absolutely.
For our, for our budget estimates and everything else, I just wanna make sure that we're working through that.
Yep, we are.
One of the things too, and learning on this, is going forward to with these new bridges coming in or the repair of the bridges.
Yep.
Is the permitting and how we are going to handle utilities. Obviously, after this, we don't wanna see anybody attached to our bridges anymore.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, it's how we are gonna go forward with permitting of these utilities next to our bridges.
Yes, we have, we have a bridge that's closed. Frontier put their pipes on the bridges to run their phone lines, and then there's sewers that were on the bridge as well too, that were running, so, um, so when you wanna fix the bridge, it becomes a little disruptive.
And we found out that that Frontier line was a major feed between this area and South Bend, and if it went down, it would be a serious, significant issue between our communities, so, you know, go figure, so. And that's the beam that was failing. Yeah.
Uh, motion to approve the MOU for sanitary sewer relocation, Bridge One Thirty-Five.
Second, we have a motion in second for Bridge One Thirty-Five MOU for sanitary sewer relocations. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign? Motion carries. Bridge Eighty-four, let's talk about another bridge.
This is a supplemental agreement with USI. Uh, the design engineer for this is CRVA Group. We have subcontracted with USI to do the right-of-way purchase and acquisition for this particular bridge, since we need some on this. Um, they found an additional parcel, um, that we need to acquire, so this supplemental agreement takes into consideration that additional parcel.
And what, where's this bridge again, Bob?
This is on eight hundred south, or what they refer to as Sigler Road, west of, of the town of Hebron, over a branch of Dog Lake Ditch.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in second for Bridge Eighty-four supplemental agreement with USI for right-of-way acquisitions. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign? Motion carries. Bob, why, why were we doing the right-of-way acquisition again? I know we've talked about this, but just to verbalize, I just wanna get a record.
We are having to raise the bridge up a little bit on this.
Right.
On this, and we decided instead of doing guard rail all the way across on this to protect the slopes, we're going to go to a three-to-one slope on this, um, ideal, to get away from the maintenance and handling of guard rails so much on this.
So, it'll be more landscaped and buffered out.
Correct.
Cheated and grass, so when you approach the bridge, it.
Correct.
Okay. Getting away from guard rails.
Correct. I mean, we have to have a certain amount close to the bridge, but extended lengths is what we don't want.
Right. Thank you. Uh, well, State Road Forty-Nine and Division Road intersection improvements. Uh, this is an agreement with Lock Mueller for consulting services. Why don't you give us a little thing on that?
Uh, this is where we're looking at trying to do some improvements along the fairground entrance with Division Road in handling the traffic and better funneling the traffic also, and trying to handle the truck turning movements coming off of Forty-Nine down to Division Road to the main entrance for Pratt, which is, uh, east of the fairground. Uh, we have been looking at this, this is an agreement with Lock Mueller now on this. Uh, we, they have, their representative here with Lock Mueller today, and we just...
Um, we, they have, their representative here with Lock Mueller today, and we just feel comfortable that they have a traffic engineer and also an intersection improvement specialist on this, so...
Okay. And this is just for a study to evaluate some potential options and costs. It's more of a scoping evaluation.
Yep.
I'm very happy to see this on the agenda. Intersections needed some work for a while, as we discussed. Uh, motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for State Road 49, Division Road Intersection Improvements. This is an agreement with Lock Mueller for consulting services to help, um, for layouts on traffic engineering. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Uh, while you gentlemen are in front of us, I'd also like to just mention for the record, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, we drove over to La Porte. Matt, with the Department of Transportation over there, uh, submitted to them our study for Highway 6 and the widening and all of our traffic data and everything that we paid for here at the county, that has now been submitted to, uh, the, the regional IDOT in La Porte, and they're looking to see what we need to do to put it in the five-year plan to get that stretch of road widened. Uh, so now it's in IDOT's hands, and we're going to talk to some of our legislators and other people to see, uh, what we can do to make our case, uh, to, to see if we can, uh, make that happen. So, I just wanted to make a point of it in the meeting to let everybody know that we followed through with everything that we did, the money we spent to get the report, then we followed through and met with the state, they now have it. So, it's just completing that loop of money that we're spending to let people know what we're doing, um, and so everybody understands where that's at. And, uh, the other thing we're also doing in meeting, now that Matt is on board and we have a, the county actually has a traffic and a highway engineer now, uh, we're also looking at some of our, uh, intersections, uh, throughout the county that, uh, you know, may need some additional help, uh, maybe a right-hand turn lane just to keep traffic moving. Uh, we're, we're starting to look at things, uh, a little bit differently than what we've done in the past, um, to just figure out easy, quicker ways to where we can just keep the traffic in our county moving, to where we don't have backups and other things. So, um, be looking for that as we head out into the future and do more stuff, too. So, uh, we're starting to get, uh, Matt's list is starting to get very full, so, uh, I just wanted to point that out. Last thing we got, that's it, gentlemen, thank you for everything. Yep. Uh, last one, we got Port County Southern Water Conservation District. They want to set up a display like they do every year in our lobby, uh, for April 29th through May 3rd to promote Southern Water Conservation Week.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for the Port County Southern Water Conservation District to use our lobby to set up a display for Southern Water Conservation Week. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Last one. We have a request for Rita McCorkle to use the north side of the courthouse lawn on Saturday, June 5th for their annual daycare, Father's Day Car Show, uh, which will be held from 8:00 AM to 2:00. That's the Valpo vets.
What's the lawn going to look like, June 15th?
Well, I, you know, if you go by it right now, they either are very close to seeding that or have just seeded it. So, it's, we should get a quick pop. Still going to be new grass, though. I'm just worried about an event like this if it, if we don't... Anyway, we'll, we'll get around it, but just, please stay out of the grass. You'll be out there.
Yeah.
You know, we might, actually might want to continue this because we also kind of fit in the north side. That's also where Valpo is. Well, Valpo is putting all that parking in up there, and I don't know what they're going to have done at that point either.
I think we're done with windows by then, but I'm not 100% sure.
Well, we still have time. If we put this on our end of April meeting, we still have time to give it in. So, I think we...
Okay.
I think we...
Yeah. Thanks, Scott, for that. I think we, we need to, we continue it to the next meeting.
Can someone contact them in the meantime and see if they have any other options?
Yeah. Cause I'm... Right. But that's just for the sidewalks.
It's our grass.
Yeah. Nice show, I hate to...
Yeah, it is a nice show. It's... Could we, could...
Is there anywhere else downtown?
Tim, could you get ahold of them and let them know that we're... We just want to make sure everybody's safe and nothing gets destroyed on top of that, so... Yes.
Yeah.
So, we need a motion to continue?
Uh, motion to table this.
Second. Uh, we have a motion and second to table the Valpo Vets Corvette Club for further coordination. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries, and that is the end of our meeting. Um, uh, yeah, anybody wishing to address this board, please come forward, give your name and your, your address and...
My name is Sandra Johnson. I'm from Liberty Township. Uh, I am Ms. Leta Edel for the Woodville Foundation, and we have some concerns we'd like to share with you. I'm sorry, I did not bring a list of that to leave with you. I will be sending that to you either, you know, email or, um, regular mail. First of all, I want to thank you for, uh, I've been getting reports that the war zone north of, south of 6 on Calumet Avenue that has been there since last March, uh, is beginning to get cleaned up, and I appreciate that.
Yes, the, we, the Highway Department has, uh, submitted a request to NDOT to put in a work order. They have agreed to do that, so we should see some improvement there.
And we are seeing progress in that way. I, uh, I want to talk about the intersection, however. There's a form of a, what I understand from a form of it is an engineer, a French cistern in that southeast corner of US 6 and Calumet Avenue. It's, it, it's meant there, it was like somebody dug a big hole and then they lined it with brick, and it's meant to take on water slowly when there's a big rainstorm. It doesn't work. It's from the, from the previous century, and I don't know why they're leaving it there. Apparently, I have friends, friends that are telling me it's going to stay, that's what they've been told. Um, I'd like to know why they're going to leave it there because that is exactly where water puddles, and particularly in the fall, and if it turns cold and it turns to ice, you have ice on the intersection. So, I'm concerned about that. Um, I also want to mention that I have, because I have friends that are farmers, and they know where flooding occurs in their, in their property and in their fields. And the work being done, they feel that the pipe they're using to alleviate some of that water off of Calumet Avenue as it moves north is not going to be big enough. Now, whether the county or the state is footing the bill, we don't care. We just don't want to see it done over again later to, to no avail. So, that's why I would like to see the stormwater people take a look at that and see if it's adequate for the kind of water that comes off from the north, from the highest point in the county to that intersection. Um, finally, um, I went to a symposium on clean water at DU this week, or this past weekend, and I would like to ask that you seriously consider, um, using your position to find us somebody that can, um, check our water at a reasonable rate. What, what I'm considering is to send the people to the business, get a wa, get their water tube or whatever they require, go get our water, bring it back, and find out if we are, if our water is in danger, if there's something in the well that shouldn't be there. Um, and the reason I say that is when we, you approved for the Dollar General to come